That meeting call order?
This is the special meeting of the land use board of the township of Greenwich adequate notice this meeting has been given in accordance with the open public meetings act and that the notice was published in the express times and star ledger newspapers. Notice was published on the municipal bulletin board in the township administration building in Greenwich Township, New Jersey, and notice was filed with the township clerk.
Go.
Mr. Scudery?
Here.
Mr. Bean?
Here.
Note for the record, he's here on zoom and Paul, where are you right now?
I'm at the Greenwich Township Emergency Squad Building.
And why is that?
Um, we're doing a dry run for the overflow for next meeting.
Okay, and so you can see us and we and we can see you and hear you.
Right, and the and the the vocals here, everybody in the room should be able to hear it. It's loud.
Okay. Sorry for the interruption, Madam Secretary.
Mr. Chichillo?
Here.
Mr. Ballard?
He's absent.
Ms. Cullen?
She's absent.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Fiamma?
He's absent.
Mr. Blunt?
He's absent.
Ms. Sherlock?
Here.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
She's absent.
Mr. Graham?
Here.
Mr. Coulter John?
There.
All right, whose eyes for the flag salute?
The United States of America, and to the rep, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Whatever you want.
That right?
So what we learned from that test during the pledge, do it quietly. We were like, you were like a.
Point two seconds.
Yeah. All right, next order of business. Well, first of all, thanks for coming out on a special meeting. I know it's uh, it's not convenient in the summertime with prom and graduation and everything. So I thank the board members and professionals for coming out. Uh, adoption of resolutions. First is the adoption and designation of official newspapers. I'm told we're changing on newspapers to be more effective. And not only that, but in light of we're listening to Star Ledger, even though they only have a digital version because we got no other choice and we have the daily record as the first alternate and the courier news as the second alternate because the uh, the Eastern Times is no longer, they don't have a New Jersey edition. They only have the Pennsylvania edition, so that's why we're doing this. I want to make a motion to adopt this resolution with those designations. Our motion. There you go. Second, Jason, second. I do roll call on it, just to make sure.
Mr. Scudery?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Chichillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Blunt? Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter John?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Next is the master plan consistency review of proposed ordinance one oh three dash thirty zero two five. Amendment to add data processing facilities to the list of permitted uses to add electronic data processing facilities to the list of principal permitted uses in the R O zone. I will tune this up. Perfect. First of all, is there anyone in the audience that's here because they're interested in this ordinance or this uh, the board's master plan consistency review of it? Okay. Um, the board may recall that back in March, a contract purchaser of um, a lot located in the let me make sure I got the right zone, the O P L R Office Professional Limited Research Zone made a proposal to the governing body to add data centers to the list of permitted uses in that zone. Governing body thought it was interesting. They referred him and the proposal to the land use board and so.
The R O zone.
All sorry.
It's already permitted in that zone. They're asking to be.
Yes, I am sorry. They're already permitted in the that other zone I mentioned, and the proposal is to also allow them in the R O research office zone. Thank you. So the presentation was made to this board and there was a proposed draft of an ordinance and the board thought it was a good idea, but they suggested a couple of changes to the ordinance. So on April one, twenty twenty five, um, email went to the township clerk saying, as requested by the mayor and township committee, the Greenwich Township Land Use Board heard a presentation at its meeting last night, which would have made it March thirty one. By Greystone Capital, the contract purchaser of the Borges property to amend the zoning ordinance to add data processing facilities to the list of granted uses in the R O zone. The board reviewed the proposed ordinance one oh one dash twenty twenty five. The board unanimously voted to recommend to the governing body that the ordinance be slightly revised and then introduced. So governing body then introduced the ordinance on first reading. The township clerk sent a letter to the board secretary dated April twenty one, saying, please be advised at a regular meeting of the township committee held on April seventeen, twenty twenty five, the mayor and township committee introduced and passed on first reading following ordinance, so ordinance one oh three, twenty twenty five. An ordinance cmenting chapter sixteen regarding permitted uses and prohibited uses to add electronic data processing facilities to the list of principal printed uses in the R O zone, a copy of which is enclosed. Then the governing, the letter refers the ordinance now to the governing body because under the municipal land use law, after an ordinance is introduced to the governing body, it has to be reviewed by this board for consistency with the master plan. And as I told the board before, when you've done the master plan consistency reviews, you have basically have three choices. It's consistent, or it's not inconsistent, the double negative, or it is inconsistent. And then at this point, I always turn it over to the board's planning expert for her to render an opinion to the board on her opinion on whether it's consistent, not inconsistent, or inconsistent, and why.
Okay, so.
And since this is not a hearing.
Yeah.
I also swear her in for this. The next hearing she'll be sworn in. This is not a hearing. And because of that, if someone was here and wanted to talk about it, would be in the chair's discretion, but no one's here to talk about it, but the board does not have to allow anyone to talk about something in a non-hearing situation.
Simple ordinance change for the O R zone, sorry, R O zone, and um, we look at the land use elements when we talk about consistency. So you may have reexamination reports, but we always go back to the land use plan element, which was in two thousand eleven. That was the last land use plan element. And the difference between something being consistent and not inconsistent, in my view, is that if something's consistent with the master plan, it means that the master plans or the land use plan specifically mentioned that, Pete, that thing. So the the plan would have set, would have had to say, data processing facilities are recommended in the R O zone. That doesn't, that does not happen in the, in the land use plan element. However, what we can find, or you can find, is that it's not inconsistent with the master plan, as long as it effectuates some goals and objectives of the master plan. So I'm just going to read a couple of them to you as, in my opinion, that they, that this particular ordinance would effectuate these goals and objectives. Um, this is on page ten of the two thousand eleven uh, land use plan element, and they identify specific goals of the land, of land use planning specifically in in the township. One is to establish, I'm sorry, one is to provide for limited lawn residential growth to address the imbalance between residential and non-residential employment generating land uses, which is disproportionately weighted by residential, meaning that um, one of the goals is to provide for limited non-residential growth. As you all know, may not know, or you may know, electronic data processing facilities um, are obviously economic development um, and commercial entities, but they don't actually create a lot of new um, traffic. You know, it's, it's really just a center that holds equipment and you have some employees that are associated with it. So definitely is providing for um, limited non-residential growth. The other um, uh, goal or objective that I want to read to you is found, I'm going to go backwards on page eight of the land use plan element, and it's to encourage appropriate patterns of compatible residential, commercial, and industrial development, redevelopment and economic growth in or adjacent to areas already utilized for such purposes. The R O zone is already utilized for um, commercial and industrial development, uh, mostly commercial and and office for that matter. Uh, so it's not necessarily uh, inconsistent with uh, what's already happening in this particular zoning um, area. Uh, so in my opinion, I think at least those two goals and objectives are being effectuated by this, this um, zoning ordinance, and therefore you could find that it's not inconsistent with the master plan.
Anyone have any questions for Kendra? Or have any questions?
I only have one, uh, actually, there is a typo in the title.
Yeah.
Of the, they have dates and.
And a data.
It, the one that was emailed out was the incorrect copy, but like you have, it's in your packet, you should have the correct. So.
Yeah. Well, it's known to someone, I make a motion to declare the ordinance that was introduced is not inconsistent with the master plan. Make a motion.
Second.
Oh, it's two second.
Who's second?
Jason. Sorry.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scudery?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Chichillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter John?
Yes.
So I don't do any resolution for something like this. The board secretary writes a letter back to the township clerk saying we board considered ordinance blah, 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 at its meeting held on June five, twenty twenty five, and determined by unanimous vote that the ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan.
Okay.
All right, next order of business, hearing on the adoption of fourth round housing plan element and fair share plan element of the township master plan. Now, before we go into the hearings, my suggestion is that the board go into closed session to get attorney-client privileged legal advice from me regarding the adoption of the fourth round housing element and fair share plan and the pending declaratory judgment litigation, which I'm representing the township in, titled in the manner of Greenwich Township, docket number W R N dash L dash twenty six dash twenty five, where confidentiality is required for me to exercise my duties as an attorney, and due to the fact that I'm going to be rendering attorney-client legal advice, the minutes of the closed session should not be made public. So does someone want to, so moved, so moved. Second.
Who is the second?
Roll call, please.
Mr. Scudery?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Chichillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter John?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to ask, we're going to do it here. We're going to ask everyone to step out in the hall. We're going to close the doors, and Paul, you're going to participate, but we're going to ask you to lower your voice so no one in the hall can hear what we're talking about.
Got it.
Time frame, or you don't know?
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to take us out of closed session and go back into open session. I'll say, second, Gary.
Mr. Scudery?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Chichillo?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bradlaw?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Coulter John?
Yes.
Reminder to turn off your speaker if you needed to. Let's see. Hey, Paul, say something. I think it's.
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six.
Okay, seven, eight, nine, we got you.
Want me to turn it up?
Good. Right, so now is the hearing on the adoption of the fourth round housing plan element, fair share plan element of the master plan, so I'm going to swear in the board and township plan. You swear that the testimony you're going to give in this matter will be the truth, the whole truth, anyway, the truth.
I do.
Okay.
Take it away.
Take it away.
Good evening, everyone. So we are here tonight to uh, have a public hearing on the housing element and fair share plan. Uh, this is a responsibility of the planning board to adopt uh, a master, the master plan elements of which a housing element and fair share plan is one of them. Um, so this is your responsibility. I'm going to go through a thirty thousand foot view of affordable housing and then bring it down to ground level.
And just for the record, the actual fourth round housing element and fair share plan is seventeen pages long. It was emailed out to all of you guys. It was put on file uh, ten days before this hearing, including the appendices.
Yeah, thank you. So the agenda of the meeting will consist of the overview of affordable housing. We're going to talk about the obligation for the municipality, how the fair share housing, um, I'm sorry, how the fair share plan is going to satisfy that obligation, what the next steps are, and then uh, we would open up to, well, questions from the board, uh, and then open it up to the public for any questions and public input.
Right, and if public input, if anyone wants to make any statements, I'll swear you won't.
So as John just mentioned, the the master plan, i- it, um, housing element, fair share plan is a combination of a bunch of uh, different items, and that's in in coordination and in compliance with the municipal land use law, as well as the Fair Housing Act. Um, these are all the components that go into the housing plan. Uh, if you start from nine o'clock on this little half uh, clock that you have here, the housing demographic employment analysis, that's in the appendix. I always stick that in the appendix. It's based upon census data. It gives all the updated information on demographics, on housing and employment. Um, so if you're, if you're interested in in reading that, that's where that sits. The probable future of affordable housing stock, consideration of lands of poor affordable housing, the satisfaction of a rehab obligation, which you do not have, uh, it's also called fragment need, and the satisfaction of your um, this, in this particular instance, your fourth round obligation, uh, they are all within the meat of the seventeen pages of of the plan. The trust fund, the spending plan that sits in the appendix as well as any resolution. So you, there will be a resolution tonight that if you adopt it, we will put it into the plan, and then the the governing body has to actually endorse it as well, and they will do that after the fact. Um, so that's what's just generally in in the master plan, excuse me, in the housing element and fair share plan. So the first thing I always like to talk about, when we talk about affordable housing, is describing what affordable housing is and who can, who can uh, qualify for affordable housing. Greenwich was, is in what's known as region two. It includes Warren, Union, Morris, and Essex counties. There are six regions in the state of New Jersey, um, and they include all the municipalities in the state. The reason that's important is that folks that can qualify for um, affordable housing have to meet qualifications or income qualifications as it relates to that particular region, and that region, when you pull those counties together, has certain incomes that are different than all the other six regions. In this region, the median household income, for instance, for a two-person household, the median is a hundred and three thousand dollars. The way you determine what's affordable is that you look at uh, anything that is eighty percent of the median or less. So a moderate income household of two people um, of eighty percent of the median would earn eighty two thousand dollars. That's the first level of affordable housing. If I make eighty two thousand dollars and I have another person in my household, I can apply for affordable housing. I would meet the income requirements. Um, from eighty, from eighty percent to fifty percent of median income, that's moderate. Anything from fifty percent to thirty percent of median income is low income, fifty one thousand below, and very low income is thirty one thousand and below for two-person household. That just gives you a sense of uh, who, who can uh, apply and qualify for affordable housing. That then turns into or relates to affordability. What can folks like that uh, afford? And if you're looking at a for-sale home for a two-person household, you're probably looking at anywhere between seventy five thousand for a low income to a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house to a moderate income for a two-person household, typically a one or a two-bedroom house, and the same goes for for rent uh, for very low, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to two thousand dollars a month for moderate for a two-person household. Um, when it, when we're dealing with for sale or or units that are for sale, typically a very low income household cannot um, uh, qualify for a mortgage. So we don't want, normally see very low income households affording um, for-sale homes. They're usually going into rental, so I don't cover that. There is a very um, comprehensive uh, qualification requirements per the state of New Jersey. So uh, income, people who need the income qualification, put their name into the hat for uh, affordable housing in the, in the municipality. When a unit becomes available, what happens is they take this waiting list of people and they do a rank, what's called a random selection or a lottery system. So it's not first come, first served. In most instances, there's some, some differences with that, but we don't have to get into that. It's not, I can pick and choose who I want to go into those units. It's based upon a lottery and a waitlist. And um, once somebody, let's get, says, I'm first on that waitlist, I can apply for a unit. There had to be another income qualification, and and they look through, almost as if you're going through a mortgage. They look at through all your assets, they look, make sure you have a job. So it's, it's a pretty comprehensive process. Um, and the person that either you're, you know, renting the units, they can still do credit back and background checks and credit checks and that type of thing. So um, it is a very defined process. There's an administrative agent that the borough, sorry, that the township has, and they, they pretty much oversee that process. That's their job, is to go through income qualification. Developers do the same thing. They typically can have an administrative agent that goes through this, but you have an oversight administrative agent that they're ensuring that the developers are doing it correctly. So the reason why we're sitting here is based upon a Mount Laurel decision back in in nineteen seventy five. Supreme Court, it's known as the Mount Laurel decision. The Supreme Court found that Mark, Mount Laurel Township was um, they were sued for exclusionary zoning. Uh, and they found that they truly were exclusionary zoning. What does that mean? That means that single-family home, they were only zoning for single-family homes, no multifamily, no apartments, anything like that. This, they did two, the Supreme Court did two findings. One is that that type of zoning is prohibited, and the second is that developing municipalities in nineteen seventy five had to provide a realistic opportunity for affordable housing. Every municipality eventually had to do that, not just developing municipalities, but every municipality now has the constitutional obligation to provide for a realistic opportunity for affordable housing, and the township has done that for the prior round and the third round. Now we're moving into the fourth round. And the fourth round um, is really the the uh, the beginning piece of the, the fourth round is the fact that the Fair Housing Act was amended in March of last year. Governor signed, signed the amended Fair Housing Act. It established a need. It established uh, updated laws that we are to abide by as we, as to how municipalities satisfy that obligation, and it also set up a different compliance process. So essentially what happened was first they established a need, eighty thousand total units throughout the state of New Jersey over the next ten years is what was found to be the need of affordable housing in the state. That then was whittled down into those different regions, as I mentioned to you, the six reasons, regions. In region two, um, I think you have second highest need, twenty thousand five hundred units are needed in this region, Warren, Morris, Union, and Essex counties. That then was, that was pushed into, I mean, individual municipalities. So that twenty thousand five hundred units was then divided up amongst all the municipalities in the, the, this particular region. Based upon a methodology, uh, and I won't get into the details of it, but it had three components to the methodology as to how, how your obligation was assigned to you. One was they looked at household income as it relates to the overall region household income, the average household income. So if you had high house, high household incomes, your factor was a bit higher for that. They looked at non-residential uh, assessment value. So if you had a lot of non-residential assessments, meaning you had lots of commercial activity, warehousing, industrial, if you had a high non-residential assessment as compared to the overall region, that would push up your factor number for that. And if you had a lot of developable land, there was a land capacity factor as it compared to the overall region, and that's where Greenwich Township was nailed, I will tell you. You had a lot of developable land in this, in the uh, municipality, which then increased your, your uh, obligation. So your obligation was actually limited. Uh, originally, it, it was, um, what was it? One minute, I think we have.
Originally, it was seven hundred forty seven.
Thank you. Seven hundred forty seven units in Greenwich Township. That was your original obligation. We went through mediation process.
Then the twenty percent cap kicked in, lowered it to three sixty.
Three sixty.
Then.
We did a recalculation of the obligation. Uh, we came up with, we being my firm, came up with an obligation of one thirty nine, which the township uh, approved by, by resolution. Uh, there was a objection to that when we went through uh, the, the program, uh, which is a mediation arm of the court and um, settlement negotiations. Uh, we were able to uh, arrive at a, a, an obligation of two hundred and fifty. So the municipality's obligation, and we'll talk about it in a second, is two hundred and fifty for the next ten years. Um, that, that Fair Housing Act created not only the obligation, the methodology as to how we figured it out, but also the compliance regulations as to how we satisfy that obligation, and they set up a mediation program. So um, normally, in kind of the normal world of affordable housing and master plan, you as, you as a planning board would adopt the master plan, get it endorsed, and you would then get, in the past, reviewed by an administrative body of the state of New Jersey, and you would go.
Council on Affordable Housing.
Which no longer exists. Um, it is now a litigation process. So as of two thousand fifteen, everything goes through a court system. So while you all have authority to adopt your master plan, the township is still on the hook to satisfy and negotiate the affordable housing obligation, as well as the satisfaction of of the same. Um, so there's a mediation process that we, that's been set up, and we'll, we'll talk about that in a thing, as we talk about next steps. So your third round obligation, um, which ran from nineteen ninety nine to twenty twenty five, it was a twenty-six-year cycle, uh, was two hundred and forty-five units. Your fourth round obligation, as I just mentioned, was, is two hundred and fifty units, and that's a ten, ten-year cycle. The third round ran for such a long time because there were just so many lawsuits against COA. Um, and it, and it just, it never got off the ground. They could never adopt rules that actually would stand, and so the, the Supreme Court basically took it out of COA's hand and put it into the court's hands. Um, so the third round was a very long period of time, but honestly, we didn't really adopt new uh, third round uh, housing elements probably until about three or four years ago, maybe five years ago. So not only are we on that very end of the third round, but we just adopted plans that you were starting to see construction of. We are just now beginning the fourth round, and the Fair Housing Act has created a, a situation where you have to adopt a new plan before the end of the third round. So you're adopting a fourth round plan while you're still in the third.
And we have till June thirtieth to adopt the plan. If it's not adopted by June thirtieth, and then if I don't file it with the court in our fourth round declaratory judgment act, and within forty-eight hours, the township loses its immunity, the builders run many suits, and then builders can come in, pick a site, file an action, and they can control where the housing goes, whereas under the amended Fair Housing Act, if you follow the rules, do everything on time, you have regained your zoning destiny, so to speak. You get to pick where the affordable housing and the multifamily and the identity housing goes.
Correct. So.
Anytime I speak, I'm giving legal advice. She's testifying, I'm not testifying.
You're clarifying.
I'm clarifying and giving legal advice.
As always.
And this, this is legal advice that doesn't need to be in closed session, legal advice that I'm giving, if I'm giving in an open session.
So the other thing the Fair Housing Act did is it set up the requirements as to how we put the housing element fair share plan together. And so the first item was, we are to look back to the third round and determine if there were any unfulfilled units, meaning there were any units that were not under construction or constructed and occupied, and we have to indicate whether those units are still realistic, that they will be built, or we would have to come up with uh, the, the deficit. We'd have to create the, the um, the satisfaction of those units in the fourth round. I'm happy to say that your two hundred and forty-five units are, in my opinion, filled, fulfilled. Um, you've, there are seventy-three units that are, have been occupied, sixty-six units that are currently through going, that's uh, the Willows, going through occup, occupation now or being occupied. Sixty-four units are proposed, and there's a long um, paragraph in the, the uh, fair share plan that talks about, that's the firm in sight.
Right, this is another hundred percent site. This is circumstances beyond our control. You have the the owner across the street, uh, we have an eminent domain action pending against the owner across the street to tap into his sewer line. The next-door neighbor, we have a pending eminent domain action to move his storm uh, drainage easement, and I see our two people who are, at most of our meetings, you lived through all that during the, the planning board application. Those actions are still pending, but they're getting close to a resolution, maybe ninety days away is my prediction.
So in my opinion, I think that the board can find, and I will, uh, you know, make that clear, that that's still a realistic project. I think it's still moving forward. The ti, the town has spent time and money on uh, securing these easements so that they can get approval, so that they can.
Got a lot of money.
A lot of money.
Not only, the township's got to pay for the takings and pay the attorney fees, not my firm, for the, the takings.
Yeah.
The, the township has engaged a firm that uh, specializes in eminent domain for that.
And then in the third round, you, you receive for fifty-one bonus credits, which basically mean those are paper credits. You got a two-for-one bonus for rental units. So those aren't actually units that are being built. Those are bonus credits. That's how you get to the two hundred and forty-five units. The good news is you had nine surplus credits, meaning you, you went above and beyond. The good news is you had nine surplus credits, meaning you have, you went above and beyond the two hundred and forty-five units.
Those are the nine credits from the um.
You actually from, there's there ones from the Willows.
Right.
And then one is from the um Arc, this especially. Um, so you actually received nine credits that went into the fourth round. And you and you'll see that in the plan. So the fair share plan to address the two hundred and fifty units uh. It includes those surplus credits uh from the from the third round as well as um. A zoning district that includes uh three separate zoning areas on one hundred and ten acres of what's known as the Dowell Track. Um, I want to talk about however, the durational adjustment before we get there. So two hundred and fifty units uh is a lot of units. And one of the things that's required when we look at sites is that they have to have sufficient sewer and water capacity to service. Those units. And in this particular instance, uh when we look at the sewer allocation for the municipality. We know that there are, and this is on page eight of the report, we know that there are three hundred and eighty-eight gallons per day that um that the municipality has allocated. To that. Three hundred and eighty-eight thousand gallons per day. The current usage that the town uses is two hundred and ten thousand gallons per day. And approximately thirty thousand beyond that is is committed to those affordable housing projects that we just talked about. The township also has to allocate approximately a little bit over seventy-one thousand gallons per day of sewer. For uh Stewartsville, which has filling septic systems, for the middle school, which has showing septic systems. As well as um other projects that have received approval or are in an area in need of redevelopment uh that have already been designated as such. So the remaining capacity actually is held by Dowell, this particular site we're going to talk about. Um, in which that person, that owner, has seventy-five thousand gallons per day of sewer capacity. So we look at that. And we say, okay, based upon the average allocation, and then I've gone through this with the township engineer. Of two hundred and thirty gallons per day per unit on average. Um, that could support three hundred and twenty-five total units of which sixty-five would be affordable.
Because sixty-five is twenty percent, the twenty percent set aside at three twenty-five, correct?
That's correct. Thank you. So what happens in that situation is that we can zone for those sixty-five units or three hundred and twenty-five total units. But we have to do what's called a durational adjustment of the remainder of the remaining units. Um, so two fifty minus uh. Let's just say minus sixty-five gets you to one eighty-five, but we have surplus credits coming from. Uh, the the fourth round, sorry, the third round. So we're basically adjusting a hundred and seventy-six affordable housing units. So the proposed uh plan will not only zone for the the units that can be had by the sewer capacity. But we're also going to do what's known as an overlay zone uh for the area that would be a potential future. Uh, inclusionary development when sewer capacity becomes available.
Yes.
When, if if or when, if and when.
If or when.
If or when. Um, this is a map of the zoning districts that.
This is the Dowell property?
This is the Dowell property. Um, and so on page. If you're following along, on page eleven of the plan, why don't you go up to the screen and point it out when you're doing this part? So essentially, the the hundred and ten acres is outlined in different colors uh that you see here. There are basically going to be four different districts on this property, uh maybe five, but I'll I'll talk about that in a second. So. There's an existing baseball field and softball field. We're we're going to continue to zone as um government use. And so this is for a a recreational use. So we're we're hoping to be able to keep that in place. Um, there's a IRH, which is Inclusionary Residential Housing District One, which is a. Off Beatty Road across from single family homes, and this is going to be zoned at eight units an acre for. Single family homes, attached, uh detached or townhouses. If you can get to eight units an acre. Uh, and that I forget.
And the reason those aren't so-called apartment buildings is because they're across from single family.
Yes, what we wanted to do with this zoning district was have somewhat of a sliding scale of density. So as you are closer to residential, it's a lower density. As you get to the state highway or Route seventy uh seventy-eight, it's a higher density. So you have eight units here on IRH two, you have twelve units, and then this is an overlay zone.
The green, I R.
Inclusionary residential housing two zone.
And that's that's a rezoning.
That's a rezoning. The yellow, green is rezoning. This is an overlay zone.
The blue.
So the overlay zone is inclusionary overlay residential housing one.
The durational adjustment.
That's the durational adjustment. Um, that, that particular zone, uh an overlay zone. Means exactly that. It's overlaid on the existing z- uh zoning that sits underneath that, which is um RO. So the person that owns that property can continue to potentially build under that. RO zone if they choose to do so, but they will have an option to do inclusionary housing. At twelve units an acre, um if and when sewer capacity becomes available. So that's how we're proposing and the the Affordable Housing Committee, which was made up of members, um uh myself, John. Uh, the mayor, um Arthney, Brian, Baylor, and Mark Skedary were all on the Affordable Housing Committee and and we. We took a look at this particular site and felt that um it was suitable, developable, certainly available and um. And approvable. And you'll notice that on page eleven through twelve, I go through what's known as the ABLES, the the council. For the 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 rules that we that we abide by when we start to look at sites and figure out whether they're suitable um for affordable housing. Are very specific regulations that we look to and and that includes the ABLES, the suitable, developable, provable and um. As I forget, uh, available. Thank you. So when we look at these particular sites, uh I I think specifically, and I'm not going to go through all this. You have compatible land uses that surround this area, single family homes, you have new uh affordable housing residential that's going across the street. You have some lower light manufacturing, or even I would say light commercial use across uh across one seventy-three. And uh certainly have good access to appropriate roads. So Route one seventy-three is a um is a is a. Uh, what I would call a major road that can accept the traffic coming from this particular area. I think the other thing that we looked at was instead of just zoning for the capacity, the sewer capacity and. And looking at a different site for the overlay, we thought this made a lot of sense to keep the overlay next to this because it's an efficient use of land. You can use potentially the same access point, you could potentially have the same amenities that are available to if that were ever to be developed. Um, and so we definitely thought that it made more sense to have all the zoning, um both both for uh. The sewer capacity as well as potential future capacity in one particular area. I think the other thing I want to talk about before I get on to next steps is if you. Yeah, if you've current turned to page thirteen, the other thing that we have to consider, and this has always been the case, um. Uh, not only for uh the Fair Housing Act, but for municipal land use law, we always have to consider affordable housing options. So if if somebody comes to the municipality and presents a development, um they have to be at least considered. And we put it into the housing element to indicate that they were considered and uh indicate. The reasons why they were not included in the plan. And in this particular instance, what we have in the plan or what I put in the plan is that. Uh, we are not aware of adequate sewer capacity. Back in March, we received a letter from a developer of block twenty-six.
From an attorney representative of developer.
Um, that for block twenty-six, lot thirty, for that would uh provide four hundred and twenty-eight multifamily housing units. That would include eighty-five affordable housing units. And at the time, uh we did not receive after requesting information. Uh, evidence of adequate sewer capacity to be able to support that. So it wouldn't meet potentially one of the ABLES, meaning it wasn't, it wasn't. It didn't have uh sewer capacity uh for that property. In addition to that, and what I want to add to the record tonight is that, looking at it further. Uh, there are some issues with access to Beatty Road as well as as Main Street.
And what you're talking about now, you're proposing that that be added to this paragraph. So that if the board votes to adopt this housing element fair share plan, it would be as amended.
Correct. Correct.
So lead what your proposed amendments are.
So in my opinion, and I'll, so the the what we would say is that the township uh back up. The, the parcel has access to a lower road classification. Uh, and there are concerns related to the lowered road cut classification. Um, being an appropriate road that will be able to handle the traffic from four hundred and twenty-eight multifamily housing units. That's number one. Number two is the other issue with the access point is that it's also constrained by flood plain. So the the FEMA maps show that majority of the property that fronts along uh Beatty Road. And Main Street is constrained by by flood hazard area. So that is of concern as being potentially the only access point. For a a large development like that. So for those reasons, the the. Affordable Housing Subcommittee, um certainly as a planner, had indicated that the proposed. Uh, area on the Dowell Track, the hundred and ten acres was a a much more suitable location. Uh, and and certainly supported sound planning principles than what we received as proposal from.
Yeah, and just just for the record, the developer then switched attorneys and we got a letter from the new attorney. Monday. Monday, and that letter was also sent to the Affordable Housing Committee to uh to look at. And the Affordable Housing Committee said it had a unanimous recommendation. Same one that it had before when it was represented by the prior attorney. And that's when they suggested. That Kendra add a couple of points in onto page thirteen in the Housing Element Fair Share Plan. Correct?
Correct. Thank you. Um, so to to kind of sum things up before anybody has questions. One is, um, if the planning board approves this tonight, there has to be a submission to the court, to the program within forty-eight hours. So that's that's the first thing that happens. And as long as that's done before, well, within forty-eight hours, you remain compliant. You have immunity from builder's remedy lawsuits. Um, the second thing that will happen is that the governing body will. So we're outside of May, so in June, uh at their next meeting, they will endorse this plan if you approve the plan. So that's the other piece of the puzzle that that has to happen. As of July first, that will start at a sixty-day clock of of objections. If somebody so chooses to object to the plan. They will submit it to the program. As at the end of uh that objection period, there will be a negotiation session of about three months.
It'll be a mediation, a mandatory mediation with the program judge or the township's program judge is retired Judge Miller. And then if the dispute can't be settled, then it goes to something called a session. In front of Judge Miller where the objector or the person making the claim. Argues each case, and then I argue when he entered the township's case, and then Judge Miller as the program judge makes a recommendation. The recommendation goes to the county mount, the vicinity, Mount Laurel judge. And. I believe that it's going to be Judge Menon, even though we're not in his vicinity. But we'll we'll see. And then that county Mount Laurel judge would make a decision. And then if someone's dissatisfied, they amended the uh the court rules to say that. You would have an automatic right to appeal to the appellate division. It's not an interlocutory appeal.
The the thing that's important as we talk about the next steps is that. There's, you'll notice in the in the appendix, there are draft ordinances that support the the zoning that we put together. For the Dowell Track. Those are just draft right now. Um, they will not have to be introduced or adopted until we go through that entire process. And receive a recommendation from uh the judge or and and a final order from them.
That's that's like, it's similar to, we had the mediation on what is our fair share number. And again, Kendra said before, our number started at app number three sixty. Kendra had calculated one thirty-nine. When we entered into the settlement, which is subject to, first of all. Governing body approval, which they approved, and then Judge Miller has to, the program judge had to review it. He recommended it. And then. And it judgmented, it was judgmented, is our Mount Laurel judge, he then accepted Judge Miller's recommendations. By entry of an order on April twenty-two, and the order said, okay, now. Greenwich, you can do your plan.
Right. So.
So we we've been working on this plan from basically.
From.
Well, shortly before April twenty-two till now.
Right. So not a whole lot of time as it relates to planning, you know, in the world of planning, condensing. Uh, putting a housing element to get and uh housing element fair share to plan, plan together in a couple of months is is difficult.
Yeah.
Um, however, uh, we think that this is a a good plan. It represents sound planning. Uh, it does what what it's supposed to do as it relates to having sufficient uh sewer capacity for uh the the.
As many units as possible.
Was possible. Um, but I do want to just indicate that, you know, you will most likely see if there needs to be changes to it. Through negotiations and mediation, we'll come back to you with those changes. Um, if not, we will be back to you for consistency review. Just like we did for the previous um ordinance, when those ordinances are are introduced. Uh, with that, I will answer any questions that you all have and I and Jared, I think you can open up to the public.
Unless I guess since you do what you do in those big applications, you let the public ask questions first, see if the board has any questions at the end. Okay, we'll open up for public comment. You guys have any questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Okay, so.
Do I need to go up there and?
Well, that microphone doesn't work.
That's fine. So I have allowed enough for you.
This is the test. Paul, can you hear her?
I can.
Okay.
Alright. Um, what am I?
Can I identify yourself for the record?
Yes, I'm Doris Gullion, G U L L I O N, thirteen Barnswell Court in Stewartsville. And my question was, you had mentioned, and and I think you may have explained this, but eighty thousand units statewide.
Correct.
Six regions.
Yes.
Our number's twenty thousand five hundred.
Correct.
Okay, so I would have thought if there were six regions, eighty thousand, you divide that out, it's thirteen something.
Yeah.
And so it may be, I know you talked about available land and income and so on and so forth. Is that what determined our twenty thousand five hundred for our region two?
So.
So what you're looking at.
Th- this is the DCA Affordable Housing Obligations for twenty, the methodology and background.
What page?
Page eleven. So the the prospective need, and I can read through this if you want, the prospective need of obligation were divvied up by um by region and.
I think you should go through it to answer her question fully. Go through region by region, and you'll see, it wasn't just divvied up between the regions, you'll see.
Okay, different numbers for different reasons. That's all I need is that's.
But I I think for purposes of the record.
So you know.
For purposes of the record, can you just?
Sure.
Give numbers for the six regions?
Region one, which includes Bergen, Hudson, Passaic and Sussex. Uh, twenty-seven, seven, four, three, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and forty-three. For this region, you know, twenty thousand five hundred and six. For region three, which is Hunterdon, Middlesex and Somerset, kind of higher middle of the state, eleven thousand six hundred and four.
Brace yourself.
Yeah.
Got your seatbelt on?
Fourth round Mercer, Monmouth.
Region.
Sorry, for fourth region, region through four, Mercer, Monmouth and Ocean was thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two. For uh region five is Burlington, Camden and Gloucester is nine thousand one hundred and thirty-four. And region six, all the way down to the bottom of the state, Atlantic, Cape May, Cumberland and Salem was one hundred, one thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. So, yeah, it was not divvied up equally, um but it it did have to do with the household income. The non-residential assessments and developable land.
The other question I had on your map, you had a yellow region, um that was going to be uh single family homes or. Yes, it does that region, would that have sewers?
You're saying region.
I'm sorry, zone, excuse me, would that zone have sewers? Yes.
To the best of your knowledge, is there in fact a sewer line on the Dowell property?
Yes, well, I know that from the Portici and Furman site.
Right, because the the eminent domain, again, I'm just, I'm not testifying, but this is public knowledge. The eminent domain action that the township filed is to take that sewer line and sewer easement to allow. The township's second hundred percent project to hook into it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And to still allow Dowell to use it and flow their seventy-five thousand gallons of sewage storage.
And and the likelihood of, I mean, that was, that one's eight units an acre.
Yes.
Um, the likelihood that it would be single family homes is is probably, that's a, that's a little bit higher density for single family homes. But could be attached, it could be triplexes, it could be townhomes, uh but yes, it would have to be on sewer.
Okay. That answers my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good questions. Anyone else? Can you identify yourself for the record?
Hi, good evening to everyone. John, which is Scala. Um, are we just in questions? Cause I actually don't have any questions.
Right now, the question is, I'm gonna go to sworn comments.
Very well.
If someone.
Yes.
You identify yourself for the record.
Bill Gullion, thirteen Barnswell Court, Stewartsville.
And I even though, can you spell your? And I even though, can you spell your last name even though you worked?
G U L L I O N. Your plan, does it, where is the affordable housing going? Is it in the green?
Yeah, it's it's, so think about it this way, it's an inclusionary housing district. The total number of units that will be in there, twenty, twenty percent of those units are going to be affordable and they're integrated throughout the community, so.
It has to be under the new UHAC, the Uniform Housing Accessibility Control Regulation thing, has to be integrated. In fact, when you look at one of those units by law, you're not supposed to be able to tell if it's a marter rate unit or an affordable unit.
So so imagine um if you had a uh six townhouses in a row, one of them in in there would be affordable.
So it's it's another housing development. That's right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
That's exactly right.
But it's part and parcel of the overall development. There's not, they're not sectioned off anywhere.
With regard to the sewer. Is there any clients or within? Well, I live, I live on the other side of Beatty's Road in those houses.
Okay.
And the guys across the street are going to have sewer.
US failing septics or not?
We don't, not failing. Hope not. We hope not failing.
All I can tell you is that sewer capacity has not been reserved for non-failing septics.
Okay.
Sewer capacity has only been reserved
Yeah.
For the areas that have failing septic, so unfortunately.
That's all right.
It's not going to do anything for you.
Septic, thank you.
And and this is the, the Dowell property is the only kind of prop, it's the only game in town is what you're saying.
Correct.
It's the only game in town that the Affordable Housing Committee recommended, and then we'll see if the Planning Board does that. You're going to hear from a presentation from the next gentleman wearing the black shirt over here. He represents the developer that we're talking about. They would like to be the second game in town. They're probably going to propose that they take the um durational adjustment units, but we'll see what he has to say.
Okay.
That's my guess.
That's the proposal, is that we're using Dowell track to to s- to satisfy the the need for the fourth round.
Thank you.
Any questions on the board? Yeah, no. There to go to sworn comments, sworn comments, let's do it. You guys want to make any sworn comments? You know, young man, you want to make some sworn comments?
I do. I'm an attorney. I'm not sure that I need to be sworn, Mr. Drill, but I will be happy to do so.
You know what, why don't we just, in case you do factual stuff, let's just get you sworn. You swear or affirm that any factual uh testimony you give will be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
And you could make your arguments without it having to be the truth.
Listen, I appreciate everyone. My name is John Wucheskala. I'm the attorney with the law firm of Inglesino Taylor.
And spell your last name.
And for the record, W Y C I S K A L A. Uh, I am here tonight. I represent a a company uh known as Lamplight Real Estate, Lamplight RE, uh as well as their affiliate associate, uh Lamplight Ho- Lamplight Holdings LLC. Uh, my client is a contract purchaser of an approximately one hundred twenty-four acre parcel of land. Uh, it was mentioned uh earlier in the planner's presentation, it is block twenty-six, lot thirty. Uh, it is on South Main Street uh and basically makes, has an intersection with Beatty's Road.
Who's the current owner of that, Wardies or not?
No, I know the, I know the answer to that, but I do not have it in my notes.
I know, but you're representative sitting in the back, ask him.
Jim Klein.
Jim Klein with a C. You know that.
C L I N E.
I believe that is the uh I believe that is the proper spelling.
Okay.
Uh, subject property is located uh in one of your uh single-family residential home districts. Uh, subject property is located in a designated sewer service area as well. Uh, on two occasions, uh my client uh has submitted concept plans. Uh, I think the indication was the first letter went in in March. Uh, my office submitted a letter this past Monday as well, uh request submitting the concept plan.
The first letter from the prior attorney was addressed to Greenwich Township down in
South Jersey.
South Jersey. So I called him and said, hey, you got.
You might have gone to the other ones, very confusing.
Then they sent the letter to us, and that's when that letter was brought to the attention of the Affordable Housing Committee.
Right.
And then you guys took over representation.
And then we took over representation recently, so we're relatively new to it. That is correct.
And the concept plan you attached was similar, but a little different than the concept plan that was first attached. It was the same number of units, but on the concept plan you attached, it looked like there was a road that went off the property and then back onto the property.
Yeah, that one, yeah, so should not have had that road on that property.
Yeah.
So, uh, long story short, improvements are limited to block twenty-six, lot uh lot thirty. Uh, we are proposing a development that actually has two components. It has multifamily uh residential uh as well as single-family uh housing uh towards the front of the property. Why did my client uh develop it that way? Because they wanted to soften the front part of it, make it more uh in keeping with some of the other neighborhoods along South Main Street. Uh, and then the affordable housing component uh is back uh towards the rear. Uh, if if approved as proposed, uh, the project would generate a hundred nineteen affordable housing units that would assist the township in meeting its fourth round and perhaps third round obligations.
Hundred nineteen affordable is the total number of units?
Total number of units as set forth in our letter was five ninety, hang on. Let me just confirm that, five hundred nine to five units, four hundred twenty units, multifamily. Uh, and a hundred sixty-seven single-family.
And it's your client and your position that by having the affordable units segregated from the front that you'd be satisfying the UHAC.
Not, not segregating. We realize what fourth round UHAC requires, so we were going to have single-family homes in the fourth round. We'd have to have like-kind uh housing, so not suggesting that we would take whatever is generated by the single-family homes and, you know, throw them back in the rental. We could do that under the third round.
Right, but you can't do that anymore.
UHAC regs, and I know Fair Share is still looking at that issue, uh, Mr. Drill. I don't know if there's been a final determination. Uh, but I know what I read in the regulations.
That concept plan show? That you sent in, didn't it show, it didn't have any indication that there were going to be any affordable units in those single families?
No, we just, we just indicated in the letter, we're going to be meeting the twenty percent set aside, but I can assure you that uh it would meet UHAC requirements, were mandated to meet UHAC requirements, so. That's correct. Hundred nineteen units is based on that. Uh, one thing I do want to make clear, um I have a client uh that has not been looking to jam some project and they're not looking to be this ogre developer that is coming into this community, you know, to the contrary. Uh, what they're really trying to do, hoping to do, is engage in discussions, have a collaborative discussion in terms of what would be appropriate development on this site.
Right, you realize, right, right. It's June fifth.
No, no, well, I realize that.
And the plan has to be filed by June thirtieth.
I, I understand that. And the reason they submitted the letter, you know, and reached out back in March, February, March, whenever the stuff went in is they're really hoping to get feedback, feedback from the townships and discussions. Can I just speak to you, Mr.? Uh, I know, I, we we do this a lot.
I know.
Um.
In in different places.
In different places.
Yeah.
But, you know, their their hope was that they could meet with the Affordable Housing Subcommittee or some committee within the township. And they could discuss a project, they could discuss density. They are not wed to four hundred twenty-eight units of multifamily housing and single-family housing as it is.
Housing Committee for the record, s- said to them in writing, we will meet with you if you tell us what you're going to do about the sewer, and they totally ignored it.
Yeah, well, I'll get, let me just get to it. Let me just get to the sewer issue if I could.
Yeah.
So, things that they could have also discussed were roadway access and concerns and flood hazard areas. We have engineers that have looked at this. We've had traffic engineers that look, have looked at it. I'm hearing this concern tonight. Uh, but I haven't seen anything from a traffic engineer that says we can't do access here, but it's something to discuss, discussing housing types. Uh, hoping to discuss open space, things that, you know, community benefits. Uh, I think it's always a good oper- uh option to have a discussion. We are in a sewer service area and
Most of the townships are in sewer service area.
Well, but there's no. Grounding properties, some of them around us are not, you know, I've certainly looked at the maps as as someone exists, but.
I promised, you know what?
But, you know, things, and and candidly, you know, the opportunity to have meetings and have discussions, uh, things that my client has been looking at in terms of, you know, in in addition to the project, open space dedications, the ability to convey property to the township that can be added to park properties that are uh, you know, to the north of us, school properties which are off to the west in the rear, things like that, which are typical things that we would, we would love to be able to do, you know, as a developer here to provide benefits to the community. I do understand, Mr. Drill, the sewer issue. Uh, you you and I spoke.
Yes.
Uh, you raise it with me as well. Uh, I can tell you, my office, uh, we have been involved in sewer out here in the Phillipsburg plant uh for more than a decade. We represented one of the other municipalities. Um, we are aware of the complexities. We were involved in the litigation when Greenwich got its allocation and little Pat Con that has uh got their pieces as well. Uh, I challenge anyone to say it is simple to figure out what these numbers are, where the sewer is, where it's going. We know, listen, I I know that the plant operator in Phillipsburg, I know the Phillipsburg, uh, you know, township attorneys certainly know Mr. Carney, who, you know, serves as your counsel.
As the township's sewer.
As your sewer council. We've certainly, we've made our own open request, we're relatively new uh to this process. And still, what do I know today? I know that you've got a three hundred thirty-eight thousand square foot uh allocation on the plant.
Right.
That's, that was the the allocation, was actually three hundred, I think, there must have been thirty-eight from something else. Uh, the numbers that I've seen actually, because I actually have seen all the reports, I heard two hundred ten thousand gallons per day. Uh, the latest numbers that I've seen from Remington Vernick, a little bit different, more like a hundred ninety-seven thousand gallons per day. So give or give or take some, so what do I know? Got about a hundred forty thousand.
Capacity do you guys need if you wanted to put in your
If we were.
Ninety-five units.
At five hundred ninety-five units. And we took, and I am not an engineer, Mr. Drill.
I'm not either.
And I didn't do, we didn't do a figure based on one, two, three, estimate between between a hundred, hundred ten to a hundred thirty thousand gallons per day.
Right.
And that's assuming.
Where would you propose to get that?
So, uh, where would I propose to get it? What I do know is you got the Dowell track, so I do know, wait, wait.
Okay.
I'm familiar with the Dowells, Dowells, because the Dowells were in the original litigation. The Dowells, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure quite how long ago the case was settled. The Dowells were one of the three developers here in Greenwich that that actually bought up all the capacity that resulted in your ordinances that required anybody else coming in with a project has to go through this process with the municipal council to recapture provision. So, what do I know about the Dowells? They've got seventy-five thousand gallons. I haven't confirmed that independently. I'm basing it purely on our discussion and the five minutes I got to look at a document tonight.
Yeah.
And I'm not from, and I'm not as familiar either with some of the other assumptions that are in there about other, you know, other commitments that have been made. That information, I can tell you, is not something readily available. Uh, it's not readily readily available to the public. There is no report. When you said, I need to know the answer, or you probably said it to the other, there is no report that we can go to and confirm independently. But what I can confirm is, I've got a developer who's got a piece of property in the sewer service area who's ready, willing and able to build a project to work with the township in this regard. And it may not be a five hundred ninety-five unit project with single family. It may, maybe, probably would be less. I know the Dowells, they've been holding on to their capacity for a decade or perhaps decades. And they haven't developed their site.
Guess what? I bet they develop it now.
Maybe, maybe they do, maybe they don't. I think they probably, perhaps if they were interested, I don't think they submitted a letter saying, we would like to build uh an inclusionary resident, residential development to assist the town in meeting its affordable housing obligation.
They actually said they would, they would like to build uh affordable housing if the township rezoned parts of the other property for warehouse. And for the record, that, that didn't happen. The township wasn't willing to do that, but this is what the township's willing to do. This is, this is what at least the Affordable Housing Committee is recommending be done.
So, listen, we think we hit the ables. But I do know, I cannot sit here today and say, I've got all the capacity I need for this project. I think it's there. I think it's available. I'm willing to bet if we look deeper, uh, we find capacity. Otherwise, I know you're, I know you're skeptical on it, but as I sit here as a, as a, you know, an outside, you know, council.
An outside optimist.
And an ops, certainly an outs- outside optimist.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it is still something, uh, you know, that we need to confirm. And I think consideration of this, of this project, knowing that we do have a developer uh who is ready to go. Uh, they are ready to go with the project, you know, compared to, you know, another property that is sat vacant for many years, sitting on, sitting on one-third of 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 capacity that was allocated. I assume they probably were paid something in the past from other developers so, because I think they had an even one-third. I think it might have been more than seventy-five, but I don't know that that's factual. I know I'm sworn, so I'm going to say.
Don't you think, everything you're saying now, if you said it in March or even April, may have given you a little would have been better in the process than to be sending those, I mean, I know you guys got hired late, but I'm talking about the applicant, the 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 developer. Don't you think that they would have made it improve their chances greatly if they didn't wait until Monday to have the letter sent and then have you make the presentation on the night of the hearing on the Housing Element Fair Share Plan?
So, listen, I think, uh, again, I have a, I have a client who's just really wanted to see if they could have a sit down and have a discussion, discuss these issues with the Affordable Housing Committee, discuss, how do you feel about it? Hey, we hate this density. We don't want it. Uh, you know, I mean, there's, we get that all the time. Okay. What would be palatable here? Re- recognizing that, you know, we're willing to work with you, we're willing to increase open space. You know, my clients looked at acquiring the adjoining parcel.
You have a proposal to make to the Planning Board that's about to consider adopting this. What I said before is, I predicted that you would come up and say, hey, instead of doing the durational adjustment units on their site, do the durational adjustment units on your site. Is that a proposal or not?
Well, let me, let me say it, but put it this way. We have a site that is suitable, that we believe is, asking you a minute, that we believe is suitable. We would love to be included. We would certainly want, uh, you know, the durational, you know, density. But to be honest with you, we want, we would prefer more than that. We would prefer to be in in a position uh that, you know, we could build a project that we can design collaboratively in discussions with the township. I realize the time is late, but it's not June thirtieth yet. I know this board has a meeting on June twelfth.
Oh, you know what's on that agenda?
I do know it's on that agenda.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I also know.
Yeah, there's nothing.
There's not that much to discuss in this regard. So. Yes, so would do, would we want, you know, to be to be included, uh, you know, in that regard?
Yeah, you want more in a durational adjustment, I understand.
But, you know, or, you know, we would like to be included in the plan period. And I appreciate your time and consideration on it. And for giving me time to speak, Mr. Drill.
Thank you, Chairman.
Marginal interruptions.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, yeah.
Maybe more.
Anybody else?
Is it too late to ask questions or make a statement from the public?
Why don't you make a statement?
Okay.
Okay, let's get you sworn.
All right.
Can you raise your right hand?
Yes.
And do you swear that the statement you're about to make will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Okay, my statement is that with all of these units, including five hundred ninety-five units.
Well, okay, that's the five hundred ninety-five units. Are you making a statement about what's in the plan or what you just heard?
What I just heard. No, I'm making it about the plan itself.
Okay.
With all of these uh units that we're putting in, these will probably be families and the families will come with children. And my worry is, what happens to our schools when all of these children come into our school districts? Is there anything in a fair housing or does fair housing then um help us with, fair housing should help us with that point.
Can you answer that question since you're the witness?
Yeah, so we, the law does not allow municipality.
Yeah, so we, the law does not allow municipalities to to consider. The impact of school kids.
Right.
Um, schools are, uh, they look at population enrollment, student enrollment on on a. Every five year basis or every ten year basis, and that's dependent upon what approvals have occurred. Um, and what's being proposed going into the future. So part of. The job of the school district is to take a look at the land planning that the municipality is doing and then. Uh, plan for what needs to happen with the school district or with the buildings uh to accommodate those particular children. But we we don't, we as, when we're doing affordable housing plans, we don't have any consideration as to impacts on on schools.
And I will add a legal opinion that, in my opinion, Kendra's correct, the law does not allow. The municipality to consider that at all, and if the municipality did consider it, it had a big problem with fair share housing center.
Okay, yeah, yes, they would. Thank you.
May I just add one more comment?
Sure. You remain under oath.
I'm still, I remain under oath and 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 actually just in response to the question, one thing I would say, and I I neglected to mention it before. I mentioned housing types, uh, when I said, you know, our our request for a meeting, one of those housing types. Types as well that our client's certainly willing to uh to look at in terms of development, uh, is actually age restricted, age restricted housing, fifty five and over. Which would address the comments or concerns while the board can't impose that, certainly developer can voluntarily.
What percentage would you be proposing? Because I believe under color rules, the borough could, the township could only get credit. For this obligation for what percentage?
Thirty percent.
Right.
Thirty percent of the obligation.
No, we haven't. Again, we haven't had discussions, haven't discussed it, but, you know, in a manner, uh, you know, we're not thinking a hundred percent. But certainly a percentage, uh, that would at least alleviate some of that concern.
More than thirty percent, because then the township wouldn't get any.
They don't get any, yeah.
Correct.
And and I just sort of the boards where, um, as a response to that, the the proposed affordable housing ordinances. Um, do allow age restricted housing as an option.
On the Dowell track, right?
Yeah, so so that, so that was taken into account that we were gonna try to ma- you know, at least allow the maxing out of age restricted units.
Any other comments, questions, testimony, questions from the board? Well, you then, if you've heard the presentation, you heard questions, you heard Kendra answer questions, you've heard presentations and testimony. Someone want to make a motion? Actually, hold it. I I have questions. I have to ask Kendra.
Oh, yeah.
Couple of questions. So first, with your suggestion that if the board does make a motion to adopt the element of fair share plan, it's gonna be. A revised plan by what you verbally explained before, which you were reading from your notes, is that correct?
That's correct. So there will be um an amendment to page.
Be a revision.
A revision, sorry, um, to page thirteen.
Okay.
And we will make that before it's submitted.
Now, assuming that the revision is made, in your opinion, based on the testimony you gave tonight. Does the proposed twenty twenty five housing plan element and fair share plan guide the use of lands in the township? In a manner which protects public health and safety and promotes the general welfare in accordance with NJSA. Forty colon fifty five D dash twenty eight, which is the master plan part of the MLUL.
Yes.
And in your opinion, again, based on the revisions that you're gonna make to the housing element and sh- fair share plan. And assuming that the board were to vote to adopt it, in your opinion, with the twenty twenty five. Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan, is it designed to achieve access to affordable housing to meet the township's fourth round Mount Laurel constitutional? Affordable housing obligations and does it consider lands that are most appropriate for construction of low and moderate income housing in accordance with. NJSA fifty two colon twenty seven D dash three ten, which is the Fair Housing Act.
Yes.
Okay, I have no further questions. So, based on that, unless any board members have any further questions or wanna say anything. Unless you wanna deliberate, you don't have to. Someone wanna make a motion? I'll make a motion with as you recommendation of the. Make a motion to adopt with the revisions. Yes. Motion to adopt the twenty twenty five. Housing Plan Element and Fair Share Plan with revisions. Read into the record by Kendra. Someone wanna second that? I'll say it. You're gonna second? Yep. Roll call, please.
Mr. Scudery?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Chichello?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Sherlock?
Yes.
Mr. Bradla?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Calderon?
Yes. Okay. All right. Next board meeting is the twelfth. That's the Tinsley application. If you haven't figured out by now. Our overflow site is the Greenwich Rescue Squad, so if you know anybody attending. That. And by the way, you guys are gonna meet here. Paul's gonna be at the Rescue Squad with who, Paul?
I'm hoping, uh, Joe Chicallo would come up with me in case I need some tech support.
Hopefully, he's not surprising you with this request, is he?
I am.
Yes, but that's okay.
Okay.
Yes, now, we are very fortunate to have here tonight, Mr. Will. Lacasa, can you come on up? Because we have the car wash request for the special meeting.
Oh.
Which we're gonna pull the board tonight and of all, and you're here.
I just happened to be here. I did not come for that reason.
All right.
Right.
So, can you just, uh, do you have?
Yeah.
Letter here?
Uh, yeah, you know what? I forget what the dates were.
I have the dates. I don't have the letter with me right now, but, um, it was. June twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth, or thirty first, because there's those five.
Yes.
So let me ask Blaine. He is well aware. That probably for the foreseeable couple of months, you guys are gonna meeting once, you're gonna be meeting once a month. On the Tinsley application. Quite frankly. He doesn't wanna have his car wash application the same night as the Tinsley application. He's being considerate. Let the board just do Tinsley alone, or if you got some other business you may have to do. So he's requesting a special meeting, and it just so happens that on the days he's requesting it, those are the fifth. Days of the month, meaning that the board professionals who, at least I'm speaking for Kendra and I, I don't know about Bryce, but we are out. Every Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, the four weeks of every month. Okay, but we are not out the fifth. If there's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. So the the special meeting dates he's requested are, what again?
July twenty.
If can you give us the day and date?
Oh, Ju- Monday, July twenty eighth, Tuesday, July twenty ninth, Wednesday, July thirtieth, or Thursday, July thirty first.
So what he is asking, would the board be?
I believe that is right. I I think I said every day that week, uh, Monday to Thursday, didn't I?
So would the board be willing? Are you available? Because I'm in Baltimore that week.
I'm available.
Ideally, uh, ideally, we would like us, I don't think, we have no preference. I did check with all my people. Ideally, um, we'd like a seven member board because.
The thirtieth to the thirty first is the preference from Kendra. So that is a.
Wednesday, the thirtieth, or Thursday, the thirty first.
And since this board normally meets on Thursday, maybe it's appropriate to do the first polling for Thursday, July thirty one. How many board members would be able to make a special meeting to hear that car wash application? Raise your hand, please, on Thursday, July thirty one. One.
Paul, how about you?
Paul?
Uh, yeah, I believe I'm available.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And you have other board members that are not here tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so. Does, so, my suggestion is, let's schedule a special meeting for July thirty one, which means. That Danielle is gonna have to do an open public meetings ad notice for a special meeting to be published in two newspapers. We now just adopted. The resolution with the new newspapers, and the applicant's attorney is gonna have to do the municipal land use law.
Yep.
Notice for July thirty one.
Yeah, I'll hit that. I'll indicate that it is a special meeting in the notice as well, and I did hear you speaking earlier, and I. Just started listening on the newspapers. Is the Star Ledger your primary right now? Is that the preferred primary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll uh, we'll make sure we do that. And.
In fact, let me just write this.
Daily Record was our second and.
I wrote that. I wrote down Daily Record. We'll get, we'll get it in the ledger for the record. Yeah, okay. Great. Well, I appreciate everyone's consideration in that regard uh as well, and, uh. We'll just take it from there.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Danielle, thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, I'll be thinking of all of you on the twelfth, but I'm not here, so good luck. Okay, so, um, you can adjourn the meeting. Danielle and I now have to do the paperwork. We gotta get this resolution all filled out, because I got forty eight hours now to get it filed with the board. Before we adjourn. Okay. I don't recall seeing a response on the one email that I had. Somebody was looking for an extension.
That's bolus and that's being burned on next week.
On January twelfth. The motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, I get it. In all favor.
Bye.
Bye.